Call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June 7. And it's seven o'clock and we're going to get started. We are in hybrid mode. I'm representing the commission in the chambers. And welcome everybody else on Zoom and those of you that are from our constituents and residents and whomever on Zoom, I see there's a group of you down there. I don't see you, but I can see the number down there. So now that we're started, we need to quickly do a rule amendment and I have talked at length with Lori. And so briefly stated, we all we need to do is to amend the rules for the hybrid meeting, Hi Christiana. And then I would like to move the remainder of the topic to the end of the meeting and then we can have a discussion. So the rule to suspend, the motion to suspend the rules will only apply to the hybrid meeting. Okay? So I would entertain a motion to suspend Articles Seven of the Planning Commission rules to allow for a rule change tonight. Oh, Laura, you want to say something?
The only thing I wanted to point out is that it needs to be Article Five.
Oh, did I say five?
You said seven because it's a seventh. That makes total sense.
Seven and eleven, Article Five. Thank you. That's I meant Article Five, Rita. Okay. So do we have a motion for Article Five? Thank you, Lori. So moved by Mike. So it's been seconded that we suspend the rules of by a vote of the commission of Article Five. Are there any objections to unanimous approval of this motion? Seeing no objections, the motion is unanimous. Please, the secretary show that it was unanimous vote. On your memorandum, May 31st from the staff, you will see there is an amendment for Section Nine quorum. And if someone would move that amendment, please. It's been moved and seconded by Mike that we amend our rules, Article Three for meetings, Section Nine quorum, as stated in the May 31st, 2022 staff memorandum. Is there any discussion? I like it. This is really good. So hearing none. Ask, is there any objection to unanimous approval of this motion? Hearing not, yes, Nathan, there's an objection.
Well, actually, I was looking through and could we clarify this to be Section Nine of Article Three? I believe you said in the motion, just Section Nine, but I think it would be helpful to clarify under which article that Section Nine is.
The motion stands corrected.
Thank you.
And I thought, I must be a little off with my numbers tonight. You guys just keep me straight. All right. So with that correction, thank you, Nathan. Is there any other objections to unanimous? Christina, is that you or? Oh, no. Okay. Hearing none, let the record show it's a unanimous approval of the motion. And we have amended Section Nine of Article Three as written in the staff memorandum. The next item is public comments. This is opportunity for the public to make comments. And you have a three minute opportunity to let us know what you think. Is there anybody on the Zoom that, please raise your hand if you're on the Zoom and you would like to speak?
I see James Olson, James Olson.
Go ahead and promote Mr. Olson.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear and I can see you too. Go ahead, Mr. Olson.
Awesome. Um, I'm actually going to do all my comments based on response from the last meeting. Three points I wanted to tell, talk about in my three minutes. In the last city council meeting, another citizen kept talking about our city becoming like Europe, as if that was a bad thing. I strongly disagree. I want our city to be more like Europe. For example, Amsterdam follows the simple principle that it is unethical for someone to die due to a traffic accident in public space. Yet according to the CDC, over 7,000 pedestrians were killed in 2020 by cars and trucks here in the US. Now, I'm not including the 104,000 pedestrians who had gotten, had to go to the emergency room for serious injuries. Whereas those are more likely to get killed or injured over, whereas those that are more likely to get killed are either over 64 or children. My second point is in the last city council meeting, it was said we have the Burke Gilman Trail to get to Bothell. My complaint is that one trail does not make a cohesive network for pedestrians and bicyclists. So we're driving everyone to use, literally driving everyone to use cars. As a result, that trail is one, difficult and unsafe to get to for most Kenmore residents because we have to cross 522. And we have to do so at an intersection. One of the commonplaces pedestrians get killed every 75 minutes in the US, according to the CDC. Two, overcapacity as pedestrians and bicyclists are forced. It's overcapacity. So as pedestrians and bicycles were forced to move very close, in close proximity with each other, while automobiles have at least four lanes themselves on 522 alone, not to mention the rest of the network going on in Kenmore. A three, it doesn't help us get to here. It doesn't help us get from here to Briar or from here to North Bothell or from here to other parts of Kenmore. It only helps along that trail. How would people take it? For example, if I asked them to say, you know what, you got 522, you don't need any of these other roads. That'll be just used for people walking. You can drive on 522. You don't need the roads. How would you take it if I flipped it? My third point, in the last city council meeting, someone also said, we couldn't do anything about our roads and parking infrastructure. Now that would take at least 10 years. And again, I think this is untrue. For example, we can make major improvements now. And by the way, when I wrote this out, I found an example that we are doing now. One is, we don't need 30 feet wide backroads, for example, 182nd Street. Instead, portions of these roads could be made into bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. And then Bothell literally converted their main street to pedestrian and bicycle traffic only, all while increasing revenue for themselves and local businesses. And I noticed last week, we did the same thing on Wednesday for our farmers market. And I am done with 10, 13 seconds to spare. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. So I have lost the counsel on my screen. Oh, that's the way it's supposed to be. Thank you. Do we have anyone else to speak to us tonight?
I see one more hand raised. Give me just one moment. If you could state your name, that would be great. It's showing us Galaxy J3V.
It's Stacy Valenzuela, Kenmore. And I'm already having trouble, not only the link wouldn't work to get into the Zoom meeting, but also you could barely hear Mr. Thompson. And it's really important in these things to be able to hear whether you're on a phone, an iPad or a computer. So I think that's one of the things that come into play. And also I wanted to mention that some of the proposals that the residents are bringing forward and the time cutoffs. I know that we have known, several of us residents that speak at a lot of the public hearings, that usually there's five minutes and usually we're not cut off in the middle of a statement because we, you might not know where we're going, even though it's a similar subject line. And I was trying to make a statement last time that a lot of the short plats that Kenmore has already given permits out on, that most of the housing is bonus rate. And so that was one of the things that I wanted to make sure that you were alert to because it's important that those things are looked at when you're making decisions too on the missing middle. Because the missing middle state legislation actually mentioned that part of the idea was to make sure that all types of housing are in a community and especially very low and extremely low affordable housing. And if we have 16 to 25 permits out on short plats that are all bonus rate and almost all of them are encroaching on our lands and waterways that we should be preserving, there's a problem here. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So I hope you guys stay on board. A lot of the things, whether it's ordinances or future projects, you guys are such on the right track and I appreciate a lot of the work you do. But I know you can also know and see everything that's going on around town that we're seeing as we're looking at the permits that are popping up and some of them are not popping up in time either. And it was at the discretion of the owner of the property to make sure to put up the permits. And that wasn't happening. So there was no notification within the timeline for residents to comment. And we've mentioned that we brought it forward. I'm also bringing it forward to you because these are important things for your groundwork. So thank you very much for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Stacy. Appreciate your time and well, I hope you can hear me a little better now. I'll lean in. We're practicing this on this hybrid. Thank you. If I could ask the staff, I am not familiar with bonus rate, just so because we, does anybody, Lori or Debbie, do you understand?
I don't know what Ms. Valenzuela means by that term. I don't know whether she means that it's expensive or whether they took advantage of density bonus for affordable housing. I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else to speak?
Yes, I see one more hand raised. Give me just one minute.
Hello, Planning Commission. I wanted to thank you for your hard work and dedication on the Planning Commission. This is Karina File, a citizen of Kenmore, and I'm here as a citizen and not in any other official capacity. But I wanted to see how your hybrid meeting was going to go tonight. And I'm seeing that I can hear you well and hear the different participants well. So I just wanted to report that. And also invite you to participate in this Kenmore celebrated event for the Pride Parade. Just going to take place in Seattle on the 26th. There's supposed to be a quorum. It's expected. And it's going to already be announced, I understand. But I just wanted to extend that invitation and hope to see your participation grow. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember File, even though you're not officially here, but I'd like to call you by your official title. So thank you. Is there anyone else that's here, mean on somewhere in the cloud for us?
I see no other hands at this time.
Okay, seeing no other hands or interested citizens and certainly nobody else here present, we'll close citizen comments. The next order of business is the approval of the last meeting's minutes. And that is the approval of the May 17th Commission meeting. So if I could have, is there any discussion? Tracy?
I just noticed in my reading that there is a typo. It's not super important, but under introduction of Spanish like language interpreters. The staff introduced the, it should be interpreters instead of interrupters. And that seemed like an important thing to change.
Would staff make the administrative correction to that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So consider it corrected on the final document. There any other discussions? Discussion, I'm sorry, discussions. Mario?
Minor correction. It's on page four. It's what this metaphor, I know it's minor, but the notice comes before metaphor.
I, I'm sorry, I just could not, that's better now.
Okay, sorry about that. Just a correction on page four with my name. It's darkness metaphor, not metaphor.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so the staff will administratively correct that. Are there any other points of discussion or administrative corrections that you all would like? Seeing none, is there an objection to approve the minutes as amended and administratively, administratively corrected? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. So let's see, let me get my script here. So we're going to move on to the staff memorandum of May 31st regarding the final recommendations on commission, comprehensive plan and development regulations. You will see there that there are items under approval criteria for five items that Lori has prepared for proposed amendments from the staff. So if Lori, would you please speak briefly to the first one?
All right.
Lori or Debbie, I saw you.
I'm happy to do it. So these criteria come from the zoning code. And they are the criteria used whenever a comprehensive plan or zoning code development regulation amendment is being considered. So the first one is of course that it is consistent with the Growth Management Act and the countywide planning policies. And as you'll recall, in our elements, we have an introductory section in each chapter that really talks about consistency. So staff has noted that and then also that we have looked at Vision 2050. You may remember talking about that last year. So staff believes that the first criterion is definitely met. Chair Thompson, do you want me to go through the others or?
Well, let's do one at a time. So where, where do we find that amendment?
It's there, there's no, are you talking about the approval criteria or?
Approval criteria. Okay, there's nothing else. Great. So let's go to number two then.
Okay, all right. So the next one is that the proposed amendment eliminates an inconsistency or does not create an inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. As you know, as we develop these roles, we were certainly comparing the land use and housing element. We'll be looking as we do future amendments to look at consistency with these amendments and certainly the missing middle housing code amendments. There was language in the conference of plans supporting those changes. So again, there are not new inconsistencies created. And as we move through the process, it's possible that additional changes will need to be made to make the package consistent. But so far, I think we're fine.
Is there any questions for Lori about that? Okay, let's do number three.
The third one has three parts and the amendments need to meet at least one of the following. Either it's beneficial to the city as a whole and will not adversely affect public health, safety or welfare, or it addresses changed circumstances, or the proposed amendment accommodates new policy direction. It was staff's perspective that these amendments met all of those three things. They are beneficial because future growth is accommodated in a way that does not adversely affect public health, safety and welfare. You may not have known, but the city did an environmental review under the State Environmental Policy Act of the proposed amendments and concluded that they did not have significant adverse environmental impacts. It also accommodates changed circumstances, the arrival of bus rapid transit, for example, to Kenmore and acknowledging that we are now considered a high capacity transit community. And lastly, it accommodates new policy direction from the city council who asked the Planning Commission specifically, for example, to look at missing middle housing and also changes to the transit oriented development district, which you've done in policy and, and will be looking at in terms of regulation over the next few months.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the commission? Okay, number four.
Okay, so the fourth criterion really is only tied to development regulation amendments. So this one says, the proposed amendment is consistent with the policies, objectives and goals of the comprehensive plan. This is an easy one because the development regulation amendments we created were based on policies that you had put into the comprehensive plan. So certainly there is consistency there.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, the last one, number five.
Right, number five, that the amendment does not duplicate or conflict with other portions of the municipal code. When we created the missing middle housing amendments, staff's job was to go through and look at all of the other regulations so that we didn't create an inconsistency. And that's why, for example, in the last section of those amendments, there are a variety of changes that aren't in directly in the section where we're tying down missing middle housing, but are necessary so that the code hangs together and we don't create an inconsistency.
Are there any questions for Lori on that one or all five together? Unless there's an objection, let us, the record show that the commission agrees and endorses the approval criteria as developed in the staff memo of May 31. So I see you have one more staff recommendation.
Right. And this one, this is a criterion that I'm probably not going to go into tonight. But there is a set of criteria, or there is a criteria for site specific amendments. And those would be the changes related to the public works facility. And in last November, when the Planning Commission considered that change, there was a whole memo that addressed those criteria. And so I had not anticipated revisiting those. If, if you want to revisit them, I certainly can. But those criteria were included in that early discussion and the basis for your preliminary decision.
Okay, so I have a question. Recommends that you adjust the element to remove the toll trail. Is that something we need to do?
So, right, so moving on, there were, after looking at the citizen comment that was received, the public comment that was received, and it came in both verbally and in writing, generally email. Staff looked at those, provided a response to those, and those are attachments, one to three of your packet. After looking at that, staff did not feel that a significant number of changes needed to be made based on your preliminary recommendations, which you've already endorsed. There were a couple of exceptions and one had to do with the toll trail. The toll trail was identified on the capital facilities plan with funding over the next several years. There was an unconstrained list that's forever into the future. And then there were some shorter term lists. The city council actually, after hearing from a number of members of the public, decided to eliminate the toll trail between 73rd and 80th from their plans, their sidewalk plans, to be consistent with that. And to not create an inconsistency in the work that we're doing. Staff is recommending that the toll trail between 73rd and 80th, those improvements be removed from the capital facilities plan. The other change that we made to the capital facilities plan was to recognize the new name, Squires Landing Park. And then the, the remaining change was to address the landscaping strip in the missing middle housing amendments. As you recall, at your last meeting, we had developed language. The landscape, our landscaping expert had requested more time to look at that. And she continues to recommend that native landscaping be approved only when it's appropriate to the conditions. So we've made that change, but that is not, was not the initial direction of the Planning Commission. So the question is whether you want to go with this new language that encourages native vegetation whenever possible, or you prefer to go back to the language you discussed last time, which would mandate native vegetation, although it could be evergreen or deciduous in terms of the shrubs.
Okay, so if you have looked at the packet, you will notice that these two amendments are in blue. So to, and these are the only two that are changed from the original item that we passed at the last meeting. So may I direct the commission to attachment seven? And that would be page number, I've got it here, 11, six and 11, seven, where you see the blue and 11, eight. There's a small dollar value there that's changed. And if there's discussion or a motion to accept these amendments, I'm waiting. Go ahead and say it, Mike.
I moved the week's up to three amendments.
Is, it's been moved and seconded that the amendments in blue on 11, six, 11, seven and 11, eight be adopted. Is there further discussion? Tracy?
I just want to acknowledge that that toll pipeline trail does, I think the main reason it's being taken out is because it does go through a significant wetland. It does cost a lot, the regulatory oversight to get something like that done. Be onerous and expensive. I, so I am in support of taking it out of the plan. And I did also want to acknowledge that pedestrian and bike corridors in our city are really important. I have heard that also from community members and I would encourage us to think about alternatives and ways to connect the toll pipeline that don't route it through wetlands. And perhaps think of other creative ways to make safe space for bikes and pedestrians, maybe taking it away from cars, routing it around the wetland. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah.
Derek?
I would just add that I walked that particular location to try to figure out what the hubbub was all about there. And it seems like a point E going to no point B at any regard, at that point of the trail. There's at 73rd, you've got the other part of the toll that comes from the utility building, which is a great part of a trail and great place to walk. But if you were to go across that wetlands, you would then end up at 80th, which one direction has sidewalks, the other direction has no sidewalks. It would be kind of pointless to connect a pedestrian path to in the first place. So I would say sidewalks along 80th would be more important than a trail getting you to a location with no sidewalks.
Thank you, Derek. Is there any further discussion from the commissioners? So it's been moved and seconded that the commission adopt the blue amendments on those three pages. Hearing no further discussion, is there any objection to? Is there any objection to unanimous approval of these amendments? Seeing none, let the record show that it was unanimous approval of those amendments.
Was the second done by you?
Pardon?
Did you second that?
Yes, sure, can always second.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
That's all right. I don't mind. Okay, so I would like to focus the commission's attention to the other new amendment, which is on page nineteen of attachment nine A in line seven through eleven. You'll see it in blue. Is there any discussion before the motion? Tracy?
I prefer the recommendation that we made during our last meeting to require native vegetation. I understand the concern about soil conditions and light. And I also know that native plants adapted here to grow in all sorts of soil and lighting conditions. So I don't see them as much different from non-native plants in that regard. If Oregon grape can survive in the parking lot at Safeway and those really degraded planting little things, I think we're probably okay. And I think that that stretch of sixty first between five twenty two and one hundred and seventy fifth, which I believe, I think it might be in the King County right away or the state right away because it's near five twenty two or the or the Burkeville. And I'm not sure, but anyway, it's a great example of what beauty can happen with native landscaping. Whoever is taking care of that there, and it could be the city, it could be us, is doing a really fantastic job, and I think it provides a good example of that this native landscaping is really possible and can be beautiful and can be beneficial in trying to go some way toward creating wildlife habitat in our suburban and urban area.
Just a point of information, you are speaking against the entire amendment, correct?
I'm speaking in favor of going back to the language that we recommended last week or last meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone understands. Any further discussion before we ask for, I ask for a motion? I, Nathan?
Well, I do appreciate encouraging or, you know, promoting native species. Again, I think this was my position last time. I don't feel comfortable, I guess, policing in terms of how people design their yards. I just, that doesn't feel right to me in terms of this position here. I do like the encouragement of native species, and I like how it was written. And I think I agree with a lot of what Trace is saying about trying to encourage more of that. And I, I'm not trying to step on your toes at all. It's just kind of how comfortable I feel in terms of either requiring or not requiring what people do in their yards. I think as long as it's, it's definitely clear that invasive species and noxious weeds are not allowed. I would defer to the specialist that was referenced in this. I think they know better than me. I myself am not a plant specialist. And so I would go with their opinion and the suggested amendment. But again, that is only in my position.
Is there any further discussion before we ask for a motion, Mike?
Yes, similarly, I again appreciate the desire and the need to certainly on my own property of doing everything I can to encourage native vegetation. But I think having, well, giving home owners flexibility to plant on their property based upon the site specific issues, which may actually preclude a successful planting of native vegetation. I know personally that had several failures as a result of that. A good mean, well-meaning attempt, so I would prefer the replacement language.
Right, any further discussion before calling for a motion? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the blue amendments on page nineteen? Nathan has moved. Is there a second? Derek has seconded. It's been moved and seconded that the blue amendments on page nineteen be adopted. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Tracy?
I appreciate that we have strong private property rights in this country and a strong sense that people can do what they want on their own property. And I am not suggesting that we abolish those property rights. But I am, I do think it's important to think about the fact that we do exist on our private property in a whole, and that what we do on our property does affect the whole. And I would encourage us, I like to think about how we can live together and work together as a whole. And to me, it does not seem unreasonable to, we tell people what they can build and not build on their property all the time, and it does not seem unreasonable to, if it's good for the whole, to also make strong recommendations about planting.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Banazinski?
No.
Chair Thompson?
No.
Commissioner Vanderland?
Mike, that's you. We didn't hear you.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutzis?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres Metapore? Could you repeat, please?
No.
I believe I heard a no.
Commissioner Matthews?
No.
Commissioner Wyckoff?
Yes.
Or no?
There have been four noes, three ayes for the amendment. The amendment is not passed. If there's no other amendments related to that blue section, may I suggest that we go back and ask the commission if you have any comments on the extensive staff responses to the citizen comments from the hearing. Several attachments through attachment three, yes, through attachment three. Hearing none, I, we, I on behalf of the commission would like to extend the thanks to the staff members for doing all of this background work and placing the citizen comments in a structured manner and also having good responses for them. That is a lot of work, and it takes a lot of pressure off the commission to think about all of those items that have been brought forward to us. Okay, so our next deal is what I suggest we do is go by each attachment and see if there's anyone that wishes to make any amendments. The first one is attachment four. There are no blue items. That means all the yellow have been adopted by us at a prior meeting, which I believe was two weeks ago. If I'm still got my calendar self put together. So attachment four, is there any, are there any amendments? Any comments?
Commissioner Thompson, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Commissioner Wyckoff has had his hand up.
Oh.
I wasn't sure you could see him.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Derek?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to go back to the work that the staff did on the public comments and queuing all that up and organizing that. That's, this is a best practice as far as I've seen. And I'd love to see this continued because it's extremely helpful. I think it just adds to the transparency and shows that we are doing due diligence and consideration of all public comments. I just, I love this. This was my favorite part of all the attachments.
Thank you very much, Derek. Well stated. All right, so anyone else want to make a comment about that item? Sorry to be so too quick at the draw. Right, so we're on attachment four. Is, I hear no discussion. I hear no amendments. Hearing none. Is there any objection to unanimous approval to move this attachment forward to the city council for action? Let the record show that the commission approves that motion unanimously. So now, oh, I like this. We're moving right along. Attachment five, and for the record, it's a pretty long one. Let's, I'm just going to, going down through my numbers here so that I record it on the audio. So attachment five is from pages four A one all the way through the map on four A thirty six, let the record show. Is there any discussion on attachment five first? This time I'm looking down at Derek, so I know I'm not going to miss him. I can't wait till y'all be out here, so this is going to be a lot easier, you know? But I think we can have good citizen ability just to dial in and and be a part of our deliberations. So on the other hand, it's, it's a good deal. So here, oh, there we go. Commissioner Tracy?
So this is on all of attachment five, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm on page four A thirty two, line eighteen. This is a, these are just things that I noticed on my, you know, I don't know how many readings were on this now, the most recent reading of this text. But I noticed that it says coordinate with Native American tribes. I, I'm hearing more often these days that we are using just the language tribes when talking about the tribes. So I would recommend saying coordinate with, with the tribes, the King County Historic Preservation Officer in the state of office, state office level, just to keep up with current best practices in terms of language and nomenclature.
So your motion is to strike the words Native American on line eighteen?
Yeah, and add the tribes. That's how I hear them most commonly referred to these days.
Okay, so let, let me hear your motion exactly.
I make a.
On line eighteen?
I make a motion on line eighteen to strike the words Native American and replace it with the, so that it reads coordinate with the tribes, so that the language reflects current.
It's been moved and seconded for the amendment on line eighteen. Does anyone else need clarification first on the amendment? So everyone understand the amendment. Okay, so is there any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Is, is there any objection to unanimous approval of the amendment? Hearing none, the amendment is passed.
And then I also have another just short thing on page four A thirty three, the next page, line twenty two. It says development standards addressing neighborhood character and compatibility with surrounding development. And it occurs to me that we're moving away from talking about neighborhood character, and we're instead talking about neighborhood compatibility and and so on, which I see is, is the next word. But I was thinking that we could just strike character and and put design standards or just addressing neighborhood compatibility.
So what would be?
So my, my move to strike character and so that it reads development standards addressing neighborhood compatibility with surrounding development to be consistent with the rest of the language in this element.
So to clarify, I understand your motion is on line twenty two to strike the word character and insert develop, I'm sorry, development standards.
No, to just strike character and and.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Right. Everybody understand the motion? It's been moved and seconded that on line twenty two, the words character and struck. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to unanimous approval of this amendment? Hearing no objection, clerk will note that the amendment was approved unanimously. Tracy, do you have anything else?
Not on attachment five, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other concerns or amendments for attachment five? Seeing none, is there any objection to approve attachment five as amended for submittal to the city council for their action? Hearing none, the motion is so adopted by unanimous consent. If the clerk will record that. We're cruising along. Attachment six. Though for the record, I should always look through here. For those who are on the Zoom that don't have, not necessarily all the papers that we have. Attachment six is pages five one through five thirty. And I believe that there is no blue markings in this. There any comments or amendments? I'm looking carefully. I see none. So I'm hearing no discussion or amendments. Is there an objection from the council, from the commission for adopting the housing element elements and amendments in attachment six for submittal to the city council for their action? Seeing no objection, let this clerk record that attachment six was, motion was adopted unanimously. Nice of being efficient tonight. Attachment seven, okay, so attachment seven also includes blue items that have been adopted. And attachment seven. Laurie, attachment seven includes the map in between nine A and, and attachment seven, correct?
Attachment seven does not include a map. It includes several charts, and that's where the blue amendments were located. But it ends on page eleven.
Twenty three. Eleven twenty three.
Correct.
And so are we going to have a separate motion for the map?
The map is the next item, the revised zoning map.
Great, that'll be a separate motion then. Okay, so before us now is attachment seven, as Lori points out, eleven one through eleven twenty three. And there are, as noted, that there are blue amendments that have already been made during this meeting. Is there any further discussion on attachment seven? Is there any further discussion on attachment seven? Commissioner Tracy.
Just for perhaps some information for myself and those who are listening. But for me, I I'm uncertain about what many of the projects are that are listed in the table. So it's hard to tell what they are, like, is there a way that we can learn more about these just generally?
So the projects in the tables, there are three tables, there's the the parks table, the transportation table, and then the surface water table. And actually, there's a fourth one now that includes the Public Works Facility and the Affordable Housing Project. The parks table was developed and approved with the amendments that were done in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And so the parks element probably contains information about those. The transportation projects are going to be part of your discussion. And in fact, this fall, we've just set the date, I think it's October sixth, something like that. You'll be discussing the transportation projects because as you review the transportation element, then you'll also review the associated projects. The capital, similarly with the surface water projects, the surface water element is something that will be coming forward over the next couple of years. And at that point, you would review those projects with that element.
Thank you, that helped. That's really very helpful, Lori. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Well, that brings up the question then. I believe you said that the transport the element coming forward to us shortly, the first one you said was the
Transportation element. So there are two projects in the immediate near term that you'll be doing. You'll be finishing up your work on the transit oriented development district. So that is something we hope to cover this summer with recommendations in September, maybe a public hearing in September. And then at the same time, you'll be trading off with some preliminary information about the transportation element, which is on your docket for this year. So you'll be reviewing that over meetings over the course of the year, the adoption of that, in fact, the recommendation to city council won't happen until twenty twenty three. Because as you know, the city can adopt comprehensive plan amendments only once a year. And we're now looking at adoption of the all of the changes you're reviewing tonight. So at the toward the end of the year, late in the year, we would also be picking up several other elements, public services, utilities, economic development, and the beginnings of the climate change element. So there's a lot ahead.
Yes, we, I think we understand that, but I guess I was getting to on the table CFC that we will have another crack at this when you bring it back to us. This is although we're sending it forward now, it does not prohibit us to make changes to it when it comes back for the transportation element, correct?
That is correct.
There any further questions? And thank you, Tracy, for that. Any further questions for our staff or discussion on attachment seven? Hearing none. Is there any objection to approving attachment seven for submittal to the city council for their action? Seeing none, let the clerk record that this was unanimously approved for transmittal. So our next item is the backside, the page before attachment nine A, which is the official, no, that's the official zoning map. Now that is, that's what you want us to do, right, Lori?
Right, this is the revised map. And as you will recall, there were maybe three changes to the current zoning map. I think two of them had to do with parks. There was a park by Saint Edward State Park, there was a piece of property near that that had now been given to the state, so that is now designated as park. There was some property up in the Swamp Creek Wetland area that was purchased by the city and that has now been designated as park. And there was also an area along Seventy Third Avenue Northeast where a medium density extended into the wetland, that property is now developed and there's a covenant over the back part of that property. So that was a change to R one low density residential to reflect that change.
If I remember correctly, we asked and approved a slight change upon. Is that what you're referring to?
On Seventy Third.
Yes, okay, so that was, that does reflect that.
It does. Correct.
There any further discussion questions about this map?
Oh, and I I forgot, I forgot the most important part, which is the four properties just south of the junior high for the Public Works Facility. Commissioner Vanderlin is smiling at me because he knows that I forgot. I my apologies, that that is the other significant change to the zoning map.
For those who might be looking at that in our public, that's that little blue spot way up north. But Lori is referring to in which we adopted a up an amendment for, I do believe. Any further discussion or questions for the zoning, the new zoning map? Hearing none, is there any objection for this to be transmitted to the city council for their actions? Hearing no objections, this clerk record that this was unanimously approved for submittal. Okay, nine A. Which I believe is the last item on this part of the agenda, this is actually has numbers on it, so that's page one through twenty five. Is that, that's correct. And this, and that includes the
The map.
Nine B.
Nine B, correct.
So nine A and Bs altogether.
Right.
All right. By the way, for the public's edification, attachment nine B, which is a map is in grayscale, it's not in color. Comments or questions from the commission? Hearing none, is there any objection to move this attachment nine A as is to the city council for their action? Hearing no objection, let the city, I mean, let the clerk record that the commission has unanimously approved forwarding attachment nine A to the council for its action. Okay, Lori, do we have anything more on this packet? I meant, you know, these these amendments that we just went through, is there anything else that we need to do for you?
No.
Right, that is a wonderful thing.
Congratulations.
So our next item, that's not really on the agenda, but it does relate to this, and that is Lori has informed me that since we actually did it tonight, this is going to go to the city council at its next meeting. No, I mean, in June.
June twenty seventh, Monday, June twenty seventh.
Thank you very much. I'll get my dates right sometime before the end of the meeting. So we traditionally have, we are going, that's going to be a meeting with us when this goes forward. Traditionally, if there are some items that the commissioners or the commission wish to highlight or bring forward a comment, that is the time to do that. We're not gonna, you know, the staff is going to do the staff presentation and all of that, the technical stuff. But if there's certain policy areas that you folks might want to highlight, this is the time to raise your hand and say, I'd like, I think we should talk three to five minutes on a particular part of this action. Mike, Commissioner Mike.
I rest raising my hand, you may misunderstood, but Lori, I just wanted to verify the date of the meet of the city council meeting.
Monday, June twenty seventh.
Twenty seven, okay, thank you.
Are there, oh, Commissioner Nathan?
It might be good to emphasize our process and conclusion when it comes to the rezoning up north for the Public Works Facility. And I only say that because we had some public comments on that at the public hearing. And I, you know, rezoning is always a touchy subject with people, especially when it's rezone public up in residential neighborhoods. And so I think it would be good just to maybe walk through that a little bit slower and clarify our thought process behind that and all the steps that the city took to make sure that that was acceptable to the the surrounding residents and what steps are going to go in to make sure that that facility is compatible with this the surrounding neighborhood as well.
Okay, are there any other items that the any commissioner would like to suggest we bring forward? You all do know that this is time when all of you are supposed to be either on video or in person, so in front of the council, one way or another. Did I see that hand up again, Mr. Nathan?
Yes, I I think, you know, I this goes without saying, and I'm pretty sure the staff is gonna already spend a lot of time walking through this, but our quarter mile zone or or area that we designated for missing middle housing and our reasoning behind that, because I know that we've already heard a little pushback from that already. And so I think it might be good to walk through our steps and why we chose that and how we weighed the pros and the cons on that as well. Trying to justify our our decision and our thinking behind that, because we did spend a lot of time on that. And I think, you know, we came to a very satisfactory conclusion there. And so I, you know, want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding. I think that was a big part of our our last topic that we had. So I think that might be good to to reemphasize.
Debbie?
Um, the comments that Commissioner Nathan just raised, is he wishing to speak to those at the council meeting? Because I think that's what we were asking is staff will give an overview of the process, the public participation plan, a summary. And those comments will be very short because the meat of the discussion will be in the agenda bill and the attachments. So I guess what we're asking is that any particular thing that the commission would like to speak to? And the two items you've raised, are you indicating that you are prepared to speak on those two things?
Um, I would say that those are two things that should be spoken to. If there's another commissioner who wants to take those on, I that's I'm more than happy to let them. But if nobody will, then I will myself, if need be. It's just something that I think should be explained a little more in depth than maybe just a brief overview.
Thank you. And we haven't got to the point where we're going to the commission is going to deal with who's going to do what. So but thank you, Nathan, so we know that we have someone to stick it with. Excuse me. But we we need to we need to work on that next, but is there any concerns about speaking to any environmental issues that we wish to bring forward? And our concerns about the environment and the balance that needs to happen? Tracy?
Yes, and I'm honestly not sure what that looks like. And I think it would be a good idea to address D I considerations. And again, I'm not exactly sure what that looks like. Just know that those are two very important lenses. And good touch points for us to come back to.
Anything else from anyone? Go ahead, Muriel.
And we mentioned to what Tracy was saying, I think, and I also don't know exactly how it could set the balancing act of the environmental considerations, of the equity considerations, but also the importance of having housing, I mean, just housing period. But even looking into that affordable housing and supports for folks, right? And so, again, not sure how it would look like, but I think it's important to highlight that.
All right, any further ideas or concerns that you would like, you think that the council should use, I mean, the commission should use to, you know, bring up before the council specifically? Mike?
Yeah, and want to be careful, I don't remove the stick from Nathan. But one additional piece to why we came up with a quarter mile. It not only includes a criteria on how we chose the quarter mile, but it also implies how that would eventually be expanded and the criteria that we use recommended the city council to use for expanding it. And that essentially is the infrastructure development that would, it's already existed within that quarter mile. And as that infrastructure, and particularly the transit infrastructure expands outward, would make higher density a more reasonable for the rest of the area. So we've got, there's two sides to that. It's why, what do we, where do we think this is appropriate now? And what would have to happen for it to be appropriate in the future? The other thing is, I think we all heard throughout our discussions and listening to the public over the last several months, some confusion about the missing middle and its ability to be able to create affordable housing. I think we need to be clear again that missing middle would has the potential for increasing the availability of housing. Uh, but in terms of affordable housing, particularly for low income, especially very low income, missing middle is not intended to do that. There are other aspects of the comp plan that do talk about and do address creating that sort of housing options, but missing middle doesn't really intend to address that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have something to add to the list? Going once. I think we have a list now, so what has been suggested to me is that we have one council member. Take maybe each of one of these. And then the next, and this is you're speaking not as an individual, but you're speaking on behalf of the commission. So please be aware of that. It's not like Karina did speaking before us tonight as an individual, this, you're speaking on behalf of the commission. So while you're thinking about this, we probably need to have a methodology so that we at least understand what the commissioner is going to say. And that whole process, it's been suggested to me, we could, you know, pair people up so that the one person, you know, who's going to present it writes up their comments and then the other person in the pair reads through that to give them feedback and make sure that it's reflects both of their understandings of where the commissioners are at. The other way to do it, which is probably more painful, is to have another meeting between then and now to hear everybody's. presentation as, as the commission as a whole. So is your hand still up, Mike?
No, I just re-raised it.
Okay, I just was checking. So, you know, or, or some sort of I, I, something in between. So I wanted to bring that up before we get volunteers to do different items. So Mike, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say that I agree, or I prefer the option number one. And if the rest of the council was going that way, I'd be happy to partner with Nathan on the quarter mile criterion. The what's and what, wherefore is related to that.
Right, so now that we're into, is that, is everybody kind of feeling the same way that we want to do the pairing routine? Or is there anybody that wants to do another meeting? Now, there's two, there's two noes. Do we, that's, that's three noes, Derek. That's just okay, so I think we'll try to do a pairing then unless there's an objection. So I have a list and I'm a little is the quarter mile just one whole topic? Or I heard there's one, there's, there's one about transit and there's another about why we did what we did with missing middle. So is that really one topic altogether?
I, I would say yes. And the transit piece of this is part of the criteria about how we established the location, the zone for missing middle. So the two components to that would be, why did we pick quarter mile? Why do we pick the zone that we did? And how does that also lead into criteria for expanding that into the future? What we criteria that we recommend be in place before it was expanded to other areas?
Is there any objection to one of those items to be that quarter mile item? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Do we? Does someone, how about the process for the rezoning for Public Works or discussion about the Public Works issue? Is there any, do we nod that that should be something that we should bring up? Raise your hand if you feel that you think we should be bringing this up as a topic. I don't see hands, so I'm gonna cross that one off. So then there's the missing middle and what it means for affordable or non-affordable. I'm just kidding, folks. Diverse housing. And is that something that we should speak to? There are several nods on that. Tracy?
Is that something that can be said in, maybe this is a question for both Lori and Debbie and the whole commission? Is that something that can be said in staff's presentation? Because that seems to me to be the bulk of what we need to say. I, I, I'm not sure if it requires a whole separate presentation from the commission. But I'm open to, I'm open to conversation about that and discussion.
Yeah, we certainly could mention that in the staff presentation.
Further comments? If we, just so you, you know, my view on the actual live presentation of an idea or an issue before the council is an emphasis on our reasoning. And it's one thing to, and I'm not speaking for or against Tracy, I'm just saying, it's one thing for the staff to say what they say, which is not that we disagree. But the point is, is that if we were to spend our three to five minutes speaking about it, that gives emphasis to that point. So that's the only real reason I would think that we would want to do, speak to something. Mariel?
Eric actually had his hand up longer than I did. I'll defer to him.
Yeah, we're, we're really having a hard time hearing you, Mariel. I'm sorry.
She was just, she was just saying I had my hand up.
Oh, that's what she said. Okay. Derek, you have your hand up.
Yes. I, I feel that we should expect or anticipate that this would be the one topic that anyone that's zooming in or attending is most interested in. So I think we definitely need to be speaking to this point or make sure that it's highly emphasized in some regard, because I, from all the feedback I get in public and all of the interest I hear in public, this is it. This is the topic. So over and over again, I, I think this is what people are wanting to hear solutions to.
Okay, go ahead, Christiana.
And also the just, in addition to that, the need for us to be very, very transparent in how we came to our decisions. So that discussion, that is one of the biggest complaints that I hear is that our city management, city council are in the lack of transparency there regarding decisions being made. So I think that's really important for us to, even if we have to over explain things, for us to be very, very transparent in how we came to our decisions so that they know our heart was in it.
Mariel?
Just for clarification, how much time do we have for our comments to the council?
How much time do we get to speak? We have per topic, I would hope around three minutes, but absolutely no more than five per item. Because if you just multiply that out, it becomes, but we don't have a joint meeting with council very often, so they, they wouldn't have us unless they kind of would like to hear from us. So otherwise, why have us there? I, I, I mean, really? Because it takes up a lot of their time and their time is very valuable. So is ours, but they have a lot to do. So I hear that number, second item, we do want to say something about the missing middle. Okay. And the last item is if we want to discuss our concerns about the environment. That a yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have three items. The quarter mile, oh, Tracy. And then Nathan.
But Lori, do you want to go first?
No, I'm sorry, Lori. I didn't see you down there.
That's all right. I just wanted to jump in and say, I think it's probably worth saying something about the work you done, you did about diversity, equity and inclusion. Those are some very significant changes in the plan.
I was going to bring that up as well.
Okay, so is there agreement that we should make number four, diversity, equity and inclusion? Okay. Okay, that's item number four. Okay, so we have four items. Now, while we've been discussing, I am sure all of you are just been thinking about what you wanted to talk about of those four items. So I'm waiting for first come, first served on volunteers. Nathan?
If we're doing the pair option, I think Mike showed interest in working with me on the quarter mile spot for missing middle housing. So I'm willing to do that with him.
Okay, Nathan, for quarter mile and Mike to be the the partner. And then Mariel's got her hand up.
Yeah, I actually want to bring up a point of maybe of, of format of what is presented first in comments. I'm not trying to put the cart before the horse, before the identified, we're speaking, but really thinking about a lot of, at least the way I view how we've come into the conversations and the considerations is oftentimes centering on what what are environmental, potentially environmental impacts? What are the D E I impacts, right? And so perhaps if we order comment with those to start off with, to set the stage then for some of the other topics that are much more specific, right? And topic centered, I think is the way that I, I, I would hope that we are building our comments to council. And I think with that, I, I would offer myself up to be able to speak to the D E I.
You're offering yourself up to be the D E I speaker. Okay, write that down. Okay, any other volunteers? We have two more. We have a missing middle and an environment.
Well, if nobody wants to volunteer for either, I mean, I'll put myself out there to partner with someone for either of those topics.
Okay. Tracy?
Do I, by missing middle, do you mean the idea that missing middle is not providing necessarily affordable housing? Or do you mean something different?
Correct. That's certainly part of it. You might, might want to talk a little about, I, I mean, I'm just spouting off the concern about, you know, density in the neighborhoods and what that might look like and bring. And there's a lot of concern, especially after some of these large projects have gone in. I think there's some real nervousness of expanding density into residential neighborhoods. I, I'd say those are the probably the two big items that I hear about. I don't know what Derek and Nathan and the rest of you think. Lori, I see you there this time.
Well, of course, I can't be quiet. I, I would think perhaps along with the, the concerns that have been expressed, you might also talk about the benefits. Just touch on the highlights. We've talked, we talked a lot about the benefits of the form and how it relates to demographic changes and that kind of thing. In that same section, perhaps.
Well, if nobody volunteers for environment, I will be glad to volunteer as long as somebody will pair with me.
I will pair with you, Dwight.
Thank you, Tracy. So we are now looking for a missing middle lead. Oh, Christiana.
I'll pair with Derek for the missing middle.
Derek, you're on. You take it? Okay, boy, I'm telling you, we're just cruising along.
Yeah, I was about to ask for a thought partner as well.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna, you're, did you suggest somebody or did you, you just looking for somebody, right? Yeah. Okay, so who would be a pair for D E I? Need a pair, pairing.
Mariel, I would also pair you, unless there's somebody else who very much would like to do it.
Okay, so Tracy, you've, you've got, you've got pair duty. And, you know, pairs do grow well here in Kenmore.
I like them.
Yes, Christiana.
I just want to tell Tracy, thank you. I think those two subjects that you are so well informed on. So thank you for doing that.
Okay, so just to summarize for the minutes, the items that we will in general talk about is the quarter mile, which is Nathan with Mike, the pair. Missing middle, which is Derek and Christiana as the pair. Environment, which is Dwight and Tracy as a half pair. And then D E I as Mariel and the other half of Tracy pair. Right? So I would appreciate if you're, once you've paired up and you've got something that you've both feel comfortable with, if you would please forward that to Mike and I, just so that we're aware of what's, because being the chair and the vice chair, it's not that we my only, I spoke to Lori a little bit about this earlier. I'll get you, Lori, just a second. Is that, please, all of you be very careful. One is that we're talking as a commission, so it's based on discussions as a commission and things that we generally agreed on or are concerned about. And that we are as clear as we can be on, on the topic and that it's actually something in this thick all right, we don't need to vary off on other topics. That's not what they, as I understand, Lori, that is what we're to talk about. Is this what we sent forward tonight, correct? Okay, now that I've said that, Lori, you have the floor.
I, I have only one suggestion, which is as the pairs complete their work, it might be more prudent to send your work to staff. And then I will send it out to the chair and vice chair. And then there's no question that four commissioners are discussing an issue.
Absolutely. I love giving staff more work. I, I think that, you know, when you're volunteering to do it, I mean, we can't, we're so happy with our staff. It's just, you know, I have to get a bottle of wine or something for you guys, you know, it's just wonderful. That's a great idea. And I'm sorry I didn't think about that. Debbie's just just enlightened over there with the thought of a bottle of wine. So I, I think that's a really good idea. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I, we didn't think about that earlier. Mike, you got to that yellow hand up.
Got to get your attention one way or the other, Dwight. What, what thing I think we, I would find helpful, I think others would as well, was Lori, could we have an outline pretty soon about what you're going, topics you're going to cover? I'm not looking for, you know, a book, really just an outline, bullet points. So I'll have an idea so we can build off of what you're going to say. The other thing is I'd like to dictate part of what you're going to say. Ask you to do this. A big part of this, and it's often difficult for others to explain, is the role of the Growth Management Act, Vision 2050, the King County requirements. It's the why, you know, a big part of why we're discussing middle, missing middle is because of those external requirements. So if you could include a short discussion of that to help key up everything else we're going to say, I think that would be helpful. It would be helpful.
I concur. I think everybody would nod. And then now Tracy has her hand up.
This is, this is a, a second concurrence with what Mike was suggesting. And it, it is something that I have heard from the community, a fear that there's nobody thinking about planning as a whole and that everything is just willy nilly. And yeah, that there's no, that there's no comp overarching. planning that we're doing in conjunction with our our neighbors. So I think putting it in that context could be helpful too. Rather than just like we're required to do this because but like this is an effort. We're making an effort to do planning in a way that's, you know, local, countywide, regionally, so that we're growing and working together.
So I can as chair also do a one or two minute opening statement to that effect to and then let Lori get into the details as she loves to do. All right, I I think that because we have really tried to do exactly what's being suggested, I think that's and also we, you know, we, people are concerned about the three minute rule, but if we, you know, we the issue of transparency and public input, there is other ways, we all get emails too and from some of the same people, and I know I read them. And also we have their comments in the minutes and now the staff has done. It's not only their response, but they recorded the concerns and all of that packets going to the city council, correct? All of those concerns and your responses as a staff from the public hearing, correct?
Right, I had anticipated that that would be an attachment. I as drafted, it would be a summary of the conference of plan changes, a summary of the missing middle housing changes, the public hearing comments, and then all of the amendments that you recommended tonight. As part of the packet, and the packet will come out the week before the meeting. And I believe you are all on the city council mailing list, so.
Oh, yes. And so that because I think that's a piece to what we've been talking about, but the openness and the listening to the public's concern or residents' concerns and and even these topics, these four topics that we've picked are directly related to that. And and that's what, you know, we're going to hopefully demonstrate in in some constructive manner to so that then it's off to the council to figure out what to do next. All right, any, okay, staff, any further discussion on this topic? Oh, like Debbie's even nodding, no, that's, we're done, okay. So I would like to bring back the topic of the rules. So if I may indulge a moment, I apologize as chair that it didn't dawn on me earlier to get a copy of these rules and read them carefully. Because if I had, I would have got what I'm going to suggest done in January. So I I want to thank Lori and and Debbie for bringing not only our hybrid issue together, but just looking at these rules, and which I'm sure some of you did, the last time they've been amended was let's see, it was, help me here.
Twenty thirteen.
Thank you, twenty, I'm just looking for the for the date there. So what I propose is, and I've been on other legislative and commissions that this kind of methodology works, is a subcommittee so that we only have three members, we don't have to have four because we have four, it causes an open meeting room. And I did speak to Mike just before the meeting and Mike and I are willing to serve on that committee and we would need a third member that is willing to be part and what the committee would do is go over all of these and provide amendments that need to be done and get the thing cleaned up so that next time or the new chair, whatever, when we pass the baton, it's it's in good shape. Nathan? Are you volunteering?
Sure, I'd be happy to put my name in the hat to volunteer for that.
Sure, anyone else that wants to volunteer other than Nathan? Tracy?
I would like to ask Christiana or Marielle if either of you have an interest in being on that committee. And this is not to put you on the spot or or see or say that you should. I am just in the interest of having a little bit of diversity on the committee, I am, I am wondering. And if you're no for any reason at all, that's totally fine.
Thank you Tracy for asking that question. I have interests, but in reality bandwidth is an issue. So I would have to respect.
Okay, so Marielle declines. Christiana.
I am facing similar bandwidth issues. I'm even though I retired, I'm, I feel like I'm more busy now than I was when I was working full time. So I I really appreciate that Tracy, I agree with you a thousand percent. Sadly, I cannot be the one because I don't feel like I would have time to do a really good job.
I I and I did not volunteer myself because I am also kind of that, I totally understand.
Nathan?
I just threw my hat in the ring because, you know, this is finals week and I've got all summer to find something to do, so you know.
Nathan, you will do a beautiful job.
Thank you.
And ladies, I've done a lot of roles, so this is, I I am prepared to do a lot of the administrative work and and help take care of this so that Mike and whoever else, if it's Nathan, does not have to go at it with with nothing to work on. I will give you guys plenty to work on. It's not that hard, it's just neat, well, Mike will say too, it's just, it should have been cleaned up a long time ago. Right, Mike?
Absolutely, that's that's a lot of obsolete language in there. So if we can't find another commissioner, might I make a suggestion? Having a good sense of how the commission works in relation to the city council and what its rules are, I think would be a valuable part of this process. And being able to help explain that to the city council and why we're doing things and helping us understand maybe some of the other ins and outs of that. So what I'm doing, I'm about to suggest that either Lori or Debbie be part of that group and help us structure a reasonable set of rules.
Well, they're going to be, there is a staff anyway, just provide a staff help on some of the, just like they did on this whole hybrid issue. I'm sure they have maybe a little bit of a list of things they would like us to look at. I did not mean to not be inclusive, but you know, rules are something that if if the citizens want to know that we are transparent, it's very important that the commissioners deal with this with the staff's support. Otherwise, we don't want to give the public and our residents the impression that the staff runs the commission. And I don't mean that I'm, we, I am person, I'll say me, I, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the rest of you. I am personally happy and appreciative of how you work with us. And whenever any of us have a concern, you you jump right in and help us out and make that happen. I feel that, I hope the rest of the commission feels that. And and I hope that the citizens that have been watching us for the last year and a half see that happening too. So I, that's my viewpoint. But I do, so I I agree with Mike and I'm ready to have my two canes on each side, Lori and Debbie, to get through this. So if we don't have, if we're concerned about DEI, then Tracy or can you consider just, I mean, I don't, I mean that I don't want you Nathan, but I think the issue of diversity is is important, that's a very that's an important point and so important, that's one of our four points that we're we're trying to talk about. Christiana.
What about if we like divvied it up between commissioners like a certain article, articles one through blah, 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 take one person takes article blah, blah, blah through seven or whatever it is, it would, if we divvied it up maybe a little bit, it might lessen the pulling on our bandwidth.
Well, that might be a good idea on on legislative issues, but on rules, the rules have to be taken in as a whole. And and different parts of the rules depend on other parts. And in my experience in in developing rules for legislative and commissioned bodies, they really need to be dealt with as a whole and other, I mean, I I mean, what we can do is we can get a little draft and then send it out to all the commissioners for individual comments and then do it again and then meet back together. And I don't mean to throw cold water on it, Christiana, but this is my feedback and my experience and knowledge of of developing rules at work.
Wait, do you see Lori?
Oh, Lori, I'm sorry, thank you Tracy, you are very good at that.
Thank you, I I just wanted to point out that whatever subcommittee comes up with proposed amendments, the whole planning commission will be discussing and deciding on what the rules are. So I I'm not sure that because this, the subcommittee is not especially diverse, that the commission as a whole, which is diverse, would not satisfy your interest in that. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that once a draft is developed, it really needs to go out to the whole commission in the context of a meeting. You couldn't send it out, for example, in advance to all commissioners.
Unless it's in a packet, right?
Right, right, and we would add it to an agenda packet and then all commissioners would be commenting and discussing.
Yeah, thank you for the reminding of the Open Meeting Act, that's absolutely correct, in fact, we were, Lori and I were chatting about this and there's the prohibition of counting votes. And and we're going to add something to the rules about, I I think most of you may know about the rule, you know, about it's against the Open Meetings Act to go counting votes individually or asking someone else to do it on your behalf. That is not okay either. But some people, not here, not here, but in other legislative bodies, they've been caught and fined for that. So I'm and there's a couple other little tricks of the trade, that's why the city gives us iPads is to also keep us from making unaware mistakes with regard to documents and Open Meeting Acts. Mike?
Talking about unintended consequences or acts, do we need to be at all concerned in terms of alerting the city council that we're about to rewrite our own rules?
No, we don't, because the rules, that's one of the problems with the rules as they structure now. The rules that we have are have things in them that don't belong to us, they belong to the city council and that's, those all should be struck from our rules, our rules should only apply to those things that are within our ability to control, like Roberts, we run by Roberts Rules of Order. We have other types of special things for our meetings, so long as it complies with statute, we can do that, but who sits on the commission is not the commission's issue. We serve at the pleasure of the of the council, not to ourselves, I mean ourselves as seven. And so all of that needs to be struck. And things like that, some of it's just technical things to clean it up. And then and and some of the stuff that we're, how we do business.
Yes, understood, I just want to make sure that we're not, don't get into a protocol bind here. Because we didn't write these rules and the original planning commission didn't write these rules. I'm assuming the the city council wrote those rules. So if we're going to change those, I just want to make sure that and and you're confident that that's within our ability to do, that's great, that's what I wanted to confirm.
Well, the planning commission is responsible for its own rules. As long as we don't overstep our rules statutorily or by council policy. And and that's because we have to have certain ways of doing business that's you know, like when I do, I what I do as far as that unanimous vote and that, that's within Roberts Rules of Order. And it's not anything special, it's just a way to run a meeting efficiently under Roberts Rules of Order, which we can adopt that, which it's there, but I don't think the council, I I'm you know, I, well, I didn't even, it didn't even occur to me that the council would even adopt rules for us. They already adopt ordinance for us to follow. Debbie? They what?
They did not write those rules, they were.
They didn't.
They did not.
Not, and the planning commission can write its own rules for how the meetings operate as you've outlined, Chair. And so they have been amended a couple of times, these are not written by the council.
Great, great, thank you, that's what I wanted to hear.
As well, you know, it's any, if you all, one of you is just really not happy about the rules and you feel that it's impinging on your ability to be a commissioner and not in compliance with the council's perspective, any one of you can take those rules and talk to a council member and and deal with it, but I hope we don't have that problem, I, we want to be inclusive among our members, so. Okay, so the third person will be Nathan then, is that, so I if there's no objection, we will establish a committee on rules of the planning commission to review, edit and bring forth another amendments to the current rules. Back to the commission and the three members of the subcommittee of the commission will be Mike, Nathan and myself. Is there any objection? Can you give us a couple months, guys? Okay. There's been no objections to the motion carries unanimously. You know, you all should give yourselves a hand, we did a lot of work tonight, we did, I think, rather efficiently without anybody yelled at each other or saying some nasty things. And I hope that the public is happy too, I'm sure we will hear about it if they're not. And or the council will and but that's now it's off to the council for them to make make the sausage. We've put the the meat for them for them to put it in the skin. Tracy?
I'm going to circle back to our pairs and and the protocol for working in pairs. Is it, is, can we go ahead and email our pair, our buddy? Okay, great, thank you.
That's, that that's not a problem.
Okay, great.
I think what what Lori brought up a good point, the clear, the better ways for you all, once you agree on something, send it to staff and then the staff can deal with the rest of us.
Thank you.
They're used to dealing with the rest of us anyway, so it's probably better that way. Eric?
Yeah, are there any rules against pairs or a pair meeting in a commercial establishment that a commercial establishment that may or may not serve nachos and beer?
There's no, there, there is no objection to that. Nor is there objection to the rules committee doing the same thing, but we just cannot meet in force, we just can't do that.
Oh, three is a lucky number then.
Three is the lucky number. If we do a social thing, we have to publicly announce it. Just like the council has to do the same thing, if they have a social, they have to publicly announce it too. Because us and the planning commission, us and the council are two parts of the, that are under the statute, RCWs, that have certain responsibilities within the city that nobody else has.
Well, if the subcommittee needs a place to meet, you just tell me when the three of you will be here, and I'll make sure I'm gone, so there won't be four on property.
Well, no, you can be on the property, pouring our beer, but, but you just can't sit with us.
That's specifically what I'm trying to avoid.
Oh, I see, okay. I get it. Okay, does Lori and Debbie have anything that they want to say? This is your chance.
I have something, and it's about your next meeting. So we are now, as I said, going to be turning our attention to other topics. So Monday, June twenty-seven, the city council meeting, I'm sorry to say that there was confirmation that your next regular, I guess it'll be called a special meeting, is going to be June thirtieth, uh, that Thursday, and we'll be hearing presentations about how to evaluate feasibility of affordability requirements, that's in preparation for your TOD discussion. And then also hearing a presentation about transportation concurrency, which is in preparation for your consideration of the transportation element. Because you will have had three meetings in June seventh, the twenty-seventh, and the thirtieth. We're going to propose that you cancel your July five meeting.
That's a good idea.
And then we would come back on July nineteenth to take up TOD. So I guess I need a confirmation from the commission that you'll hold a special meeting on June thirty, and you're going to cancel the July five meeting.
So, so that we're all, we're all probably looking at our calendars right now, or iPhones, or or Androids, so let's just go through the dates of the planning commission meetings, not the canceled ones, but the actual dates for the remainder of June and July, which you just
So your next meeting would be Thursday, June thirty, and I think I've heard from most of you, maybe a couple people I haven't heard from, but certainly there's a quorum for that meeting Thursday, June thirty. And then in July, you would only have one meeting, which would be July nineteenth.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to cancel the meetings of June twenty-one and July fifth. It's been, it's been moved and seconded, that was by Nathan, that these two meetings be canceled. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, it's unanimous, so those meetings are canceled, so would you please make public notice as required? And then I would entertain a motion for a special meeting to be called at seven PM on June thirtieth, correct? Seven PM, right? And just so you know, I need somebody here on June thirty, I cannot, I will be videoed on June thirtieth. Lori already knows about this, so, um, just so you guys figure out, so somebody has to be here. Okay, so Nathan, are you volunteering?
I, I should be able to make it, yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, because your finals are done, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So at least we have one, great, thank you. So is there a motion for June thirtieth at seven PM? It's been moved and seconded, Nathan's the mover. Is there any objection? Hearing none, it's, the motion is adopted. Okay, Lori, do we have any other administrative things or other words of wisdom that either of you want to impart to us before nine o'clock?
No, except thank you very much, great work, and it's very exciting that you have this important recommendation for the council.
You're welcome. Well, thank you for all your work, we couldn't do it without you. There anything for the good of the, Mike? I can't, we can't hear you, but we, we're good at reading lips now.
I was just waving approval.
Alright, okay, there's no, nothing more for the good of the order, so it's eight fifty-seven, and the meeting is adjourned, thank you everybody, great job, great job all around, and I can't wait to drink some beer. Alright, we're done. You can stop recording now.